Welcome to the Murray City Municipal Council Committee of the Whole for February 2nd, 2021. And I have this statement to read. Public notice is hereby given that this meeting will occur electronically without an anchor location in accordance with Utah Code 52-4-2074 due to infectious disease COVID-19 novel coronavirus. The council chair has determined that conducting a meeting with an anchor location presents substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the anchor location because physical distancing measures may be difficult to maintain in the Murray City Council chambers. Public may view the meeting via the live stream at www.murraycitylive.com or Facebook And the Murray is capitalized. And the Murray City Utah is one word backslash. Is that forward slash or backslash? Backslash, okay. Citizens comments or public hearing comments may be made as follows. Live through the Zoom meeting process. Those wishing to speak during these portions of the meeting must send a request to city.council@murray.utah.gov by 3:00 PM on the meeting date. You will receive a confirmation email with instructions and a Zoom link to join the meeting. So that's for the next, the next meeting. It also may be read into the record by sending an email in advance or during the meeting to city.council@murray.utah.gov. Comments are limited to less than three minutes and include your name and contact information. So we will start the committee of the whole. Council members are here and I think Council Member Dominguez is present via Zoom. Do we know that for sure?
Yes, she is.
Okay. There she is. Welcome, Rosalba.
Hi, Rosalba.
Good to see you. Okay, um, we'll get started, started with approval of minutes for the Committee of the Whole for January 5th, 2021. Are there any changes, additions, any? Okay. Rosalba, you, you're okay? All right. So I will take a motion.
All move that we approve Committee of the Whole minutes for January 5th, 2021.
All second.
All right. Do we want to do all in favor or take the roll?
Let's have Brooke take the roll.
Okay.
So Mr. Hells?
Aye.
Ms. Martinez?
Aye.
Ms., Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Ms. Dominguez?
Aye.
And Ms. Turner?
Oh, aye. Sorry about that. Okay. The motion passes unanimously, so we have approval of those minutes. All right. Let's go on to discussion items. The first one is the Fashion Place West Small Area Plan. And Melinda Greenwood and Jared Hall will be discussing that with us. And we've got 45 minutes.
Thank you. We're, thank you. We're excited to present this to you this evening. We also have with us tonight our two consultants who have been working on this, or maybe we just have the one with us. But BOTA consultants has been working with us. We have Mark Morris and Annalee Seigleberger has also been spending the last year of their time working on this. So we, um, we wanted to just give Jared a few minutes to kind of lay the foundation for what the Fashion Place West Small Area Plan is and, uh, and just give a little bit of background on some of the, um, long-term planning that this would entail. And then we'll turn the time over to the consultant to go through their presentation and we'll have plenty of time, I think, at the end for questions and answers. And if you do have questions throughout the presentation and you want to interrupt us and ask us, please feel free to do that, but we'll have time, plenty of time for discussion at the end. So I'll turn the time over to Jared.
Great. Thanks, Melinda. Um, I'm just going to go ahead and share a screen if that's all right. Make sure this is going to come up okay. Um, you should all be seeing the Fashion Place West Small Area Plan. Is that looking good?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, so this is, as, as Melinda said, we've been working on this for about a year. And it is a small area plan. And the consultants will talk more about what that means and how we developed that. But, um, I, I wanted to kind of, as Melinda said, lay a little bit of a foundation for, for what that means and why we're interested in doing that and how it relates to the, to the general plan. It's coming before you eventually and has been before the Planning Commission as an amendment to the general plan, but it is a very specific small area plan based on the Fashion Place West track station and the area around it, as it says, they're roughly 6100 South to 6790 South and from I-15 to State Street. In the general plan, one of the things that our general plan in 2017 did was identify areas where we ought to focus our first small area planning efforts, places where we ought to have more fine-grained plans or more detailed information and study. And one of those areas, as you could see outlined in red here, was the Fashion Place West Track Station. All of the rail stations were identified. We did the first one at Murray Central and Fashion Place West was the next one we undertook to try to get a small area plan done for. Just a little bit of background about where these plans come from or how the funding happened. We applied for and received a grant called a TLC grant, a Transportation Land Use Connection Grant from the Wasatch Front Regional Council. That paid the lion's share of the, of the fees, of the study costs to make this happen. The city kicked in a portion as well, but the, the better part of the money was provided by the Wasatch Front Regional Council. It is a competitive grant that all the cities try to get to, to do these kinds of plans. It can get used for lots of different things. We have used it twice now in Murray for small area plan funding, first for the central station, Murray Central, and now for small, uh, for the small area plan at Fashion Place West. As a part of that grant, we, we selected VOTA after looking at different, uh, different consultants to do the plan. We liked their approach and they, they kind of seemed to get us and the, and the needs that we had in that area and had a unique approach to the problems of that area and the, the future that it would face and the kinds of things that need to happen. So VOTA was selected to do this small area plan. And that, that brings me to just one quick point I want to make about what a small area plan means for the city. A lot of the comments that we've received as a staff and things we've heard since the Planning Commission started their review, um, and, and made their review revolve around questions that the community had, like, are you coming to tear down my house to, to rebuild apartments here, to rebuild high-density apartments? That's not what this kind of a plan is, is about. It is not a, it is not a, a large-scale rezoning of properties or an introduction of things like that. It is a vision document for that area, an anticipated guide for when we make decisions about different zoning, what kind of things should we be looking at? And, and you'll hear more of that from the consultants during the, during the presentation. So I don't want to bog down in that too much, but I did want to state that upfront for the, for the record that it is not, this is not a massive rezoning. It's not a rezoning. It's not a, an implementation sort of a, a plan. It's meant to guide future decisions and mostly suggests the kinds of things we need to think about as different potential developments come up and how we can help those or, or guide them in different ways. One thing to, to bear in mind as we go through this, I believe Mark's going to be presenting tonight. Uh, Mark and Annalee, Mark Morris and Annalee Seigleberger have done a lot of work on this plan. We've really enjoyed working with them. We're excited for them to present to you, um, tonight and show you kinds of, the kinds of things we've been working on. As a part of that, um, there were lots of, uh, there was an open house and then there was a survey done. We tried to get as much public input as possible. That happened during the course of the year, and I think Mark will touch, touch on that in his presentation. But I did want to just show you, um, before we get to, to his presentation, the Planning Commission meeting results, they heard this on the 20, on the, sorry, on the 17th of December, um, in a public hearing. To prepare for that public hearing, in addition to the other, to the open house and the survey that was open, uh, for a number of months, we also mailed a thousand public notices to the property owners in the study area and then for everybody that owns property within 500 feet of that study area. And as we looked at before, that's, it's a pretty good sized area, 6100 South to 6790, I-15 to State Street. So it wound up being quite a big notice, but it did generate a lot of comments and some discussion and, uh, that, that information's all available to you when you, when you want it. And, um, we did receive lots of different email comments and the Planning Commission took comments that evening as well. But I wanted to make sure that you knew that and then we'll come back to that slide when, when VOTA is done making their presentation. But I'll turn the time over if it's all right to Mark and let him show you the details of the plan a little bit.
Yeah. Thank you, Jared. Can, can you hear me?
Yep.
Give me a thumbs up. Okay. Sounds good. And I can also, I've got the presentation on my screen as well. I could share that or if you've got it there.
I don't have your, I don't have your full presentation, so I need to share yours if that's okay.
Okay. Yeah. Oh, for sure. For sure. Hold on, me.
I will stop sharing.
Okay. Great. Okay. Great. Well, um, thank you, Melinda and Jared for the introduction and it's, uh, it's good to see all of you again. We came in front of you several months ago to kind of introduce this project. And we've got a few slides here just to kind of walk through what the basics are of the small area plan. If you do have questions at any time, please, um, let's, let's talk through them. We had a great discussion with the Planning Commission last month about, um, what the small area plan entails and kind of the vision that it spells out. And I think that having these types of documents are always great for the city to kind of look specifically around smaller parts of the city and guide, uh, you know, projects like this sort of look at the next 20 years. What is this neighborhood going to look like 20 years from now? And how does the city kind of plan for the types of infrastructure changes and policy changes that might need to be, um, considered? So, uh, just a, a map of the area that was included in this small area plan, the area from, from I-15 to roughly State Street and then some of the foretage of Winchester around the mall, Fashion Place Mall site. So the, the draft of the plan that hopefully you have, uh, have in a packet, it's, it's quite lengthy, but again, it, um, spells out a few basic, um, pieces that we were engaged to develop in conjunction with city staff and the public. The, um, existing conditions section is really an analysis of where we are, uh, in the present. And then looking out at three specific pieces, housing, as you all know, housing is a big, uh, big issue in the region and in Murray specifically. Connectivity, what are the pieces that need to be invested in to improve the connection of the neighborhood? Uh, and then some design guidelines that look at what sort of guidance could the city put in place to make sure that the development that comes along is, uh, the type and the design that the city likes to, uh, likes to see. So, uh, a few, a few, few specific takeaways from the small area plan. I've, I've got just a few here. First of all, neighborhood changes must be context sensitive. I think a lot of the concern we heard from the public during the Planning Commission process, um, was about what it meant for their neighborhood. And so as I go through a few slides, you'll see that we've tried to make sure that the guidance that is given as far as planning goes is sensitive to the context in which it's, uh, it's located. The second, the city does not own a significant, um, parcel of land in this, uh, in this small area. So all development really is dependent on partnership with landowners or property acquisition. So it's really looking at what is guidance that the city could be giving or types of partnerships that could, uh, get the type of, uh, type of development we'd like to see in the area. Now, the third, infrastructure improvements needed along Winchester to improve walkability and active transportation uses. So that really the driver behind this project was improving that connection from the track station to the Fashion Place Mall site. Infrastructure there is in, uh, uh, significant need of improvement. And so city looking at, um, the funding of those types of improvements, uh, again, is, is, uh, part of this small area plan. The fourth one, concentration of the new development near the track station will create more neighborhood scale services, housing and public spaces. So that, um, at end of the project area, we really were looking at the scale of development that would really serve the neighborhood directly around it. So not so much regional, um, regional types of destinations like the, the mall is, but looking at something more along the lines of services that the neighborhood itself needs. Uh, the fifth, uh, we'll, we'll get to this again further into the presentation. The city could begin a conversation about conversion of the Fashion Place Mall site to more of a mixed-use center with housing jobs and office uses. We've met with the, the management of the mall and they're certainly looking at the future. Future retail is, uh, is, is something that gets brought up a lot, but I think that the city opening that conversation, I think, is a productive, uh, productive planning effort. And then the last takeaway, I'd say, housing demand in the region is going to continue to increase. So locations like this near high, uh, high-quality transit, near jobs, good access to, um, the freeway and, and all of those, uh, uh, all of those connections, this really is the right place to, uh, locate more housing options. Uh, at, at the beginning of our, um, process, uh, the following goals were established. Again, we wanted to strengthen that relationship between the tracks station at Fashion Place West and the mall site itself. We wanted to improve connectivity for the neighborhood. This particular neighborhood is divided by some, um, it really insurmountable barriers. So we have, uh, the 215 freeway, I-15 and some, uh, rail corridors. Those are some significant, uh, barriers to connectivity. And so we worked with, uh, local transportation planning firm, Fair and Peers, to help guide us through some, some planning efforts around those, those connections that needed to be made. The third goal, we wanted to improve overall neighborhood quality. So bring in again, more services, more, more amenities to the neighborhood, the types of things that people shouldn't have to travel far to access. And then the last, promote transit use and active transportation, which, uh, again, I think Murray has been, um, working on those types of efforts for, uh, for quite a long time.
Excuse me. This is Diane Turner.
Yeah.
I'm wondering, you say improve overall neighborhood. Could you elaborate on that a little bit more?
On the third one, uh, about neighborhood quality?
Yeah. The neighborhood quality.
Yeah. I think the, the neighborhood quality goal, as we did our existing conditions analysis, we saw that the, the quality of infrastructure in the neighborhood certainly needs some, uh, some investment. Sidewalk infrastructure is in, uh, not the greatest of shape. There's a lot of vacant or underutilized parcels, uh, particularly along, along the Winchester corridor. So I think that is, um, why we sort of settled on that as one of the goals, that there was some need to improve the, the quality of infrastructure, quality of, uh, destinations. I, I think everyone sees that that, um, track station brings a lot to the neighborhood and how do we leverage that to kind of bring in amenities for the neighborhood?
Okay. So it's mostly infrastructure then you're, that you're talking about, right?
Yeah. Yeah. And, and as you know, you know, someone has to pay for, for that infrastructure. And so the plan was kind of looking at, okay, if we need to, the city needs to invest in updating infrastructure, how do we, how do we find a funding source for that? How do we improve, uh, improve those elements of the neighborhood? And really every, every dollar the city spends, it should kind of help to leverage, um, spending from, from private property owners. So as the city improves infrastructure, the hope is private property owners will do the same and update their own, their own properties.
Okay. Thank you.
Mark, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
How far, remind me how far back or how far west this goes?
Um, it goes to the, um, the I-15 corridor. So it kind of stops where Winchester, uh, Winchester hits, uh, I-15.
Okay. That's, so that's, all right. Just trying to think of, so like, I'm just trying to look, yeah. Bring that, thank you for bringing that back.
Yeah. Yeah.
Can you pick, can we make that a little bigger?
Sure.
Thanks for this old man.
Oh, you know what? It won't let me.
Oh, that's okay.
Sorry. I'm in the wrong, wrong program to zoom.
I can see it. I can see it.
Yeah. So basically we, we looked at that, um, kind of from I-15 to State Street was our primary corridor. Um, and then from kind of the north end of the neighborhood to, um, you know, almost the, the city limit.
Right. Perfect. I can see that. Thanks, Mark.
Yeah. Well, while we've got you, Mark, this is Dale. Could you, I've got, received a lot of phone calls, a lot of phone calls from people in the area that were, that are worried about, uh, their neighborhood being bought up and turned into apartments. As you go through this, can you keep that at the back of your mind and talk about how we can belay that, that fear?
Sure. Sure, sure. Yeah. And I think that, um, you'll see as we kind of get further into it, you'll see the way that we've kind of divided up the neighborhood as to the, you know, we're not saying here is a solution for the entire neighborhood. We've tried to be as context sensitive as possible to say what's appropriate in one parcel, definitely not appropriate in another. So as we kind of get into that, I'll kind of show, uh, show how we hope to address, uh, address some of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. You bet. Uh, let's see. Okay. As, um, as Jared mentioned, we had a, uh, public open house in the neighborhood, um, last February, and then we followed that up in the summer with an online survey to kind of look at what sort of, um, what sort of guidance the, the neighborhood had, what were the, um, the, the issues that the, the neighborhood saw and how they kind of saw how the city could, could address some of those things. So I think there's a lot of, um, a lot of concern, of course, about how busy the neighborhood is, is getting. It's in a very central location. There's a lot of, uh, traffic specifically along Winchester and, uh, State Street. And so those, um, those types of concerns are, are some that we heard, uh, heard quite frequently, um, and, and throughout the processes. How do we kind of deal with growth, um, that the entire region is really seeing? How do we, um, how do we help quality of life stay, uh, the way we, we like to see it, but facilitate some of that growth pressure that we're seeing? So, um, some of the housing analysis that we, we looked at and kind of saw trends, you know, where are we today and, and where's the housing market going? The numbers, the graphic you see on that upper left there, based on, you know, 2020 numbers, as the median home price in the, um, in the county has reached $400,000, the, you know, the income required to qualify for that increases at a rate that far exceeds, household income levels. And so the one thing that the city really can control or can do about that is to try to improve or increase the supply of housing. So that's why we see the, you know, the intense pressure that I'm sure you're seeing as a council for new development, new housing, um, in, in all parts of the, all parts of the city. And so as we look at that pressure, we try to figure out, okay, what are ways that we can do that in a way that, um, kind of weaves into the existing infrastructure of the neighborhood, but also expands the types of housing that might be available in the, uh, in this neighborhood in particular? As, um, you know, as planners, we always, um, hope that cities consider looking at, um, what we call lifecycle housing. All of us at different points in our lifecycle have different housing needs. And the hope is, is that each neighborhood and each city has housing choices that anyone at any stage of life could find the type of housing that they need. If you're in a, if you're in a neighborhood that you like and you have strong social networking, you've got the connections that really are kind of the key part of living, it would be a shame that someone would have to leave their neighborhood or leave the city that they like just because the housing type, uh, type of housing that they, uh, is most appropriate for them is not available. And so again, that comes down to the context, um, context sensitivity that I've mentioned is looking at, how do we, how do we start to implement these, these types of, um, housing offerings within this, uh, within this neighborhood? I think Murray City generally, I'm sure, as you're aware, that you're seeing a lot of different types of housing that are being, being proposed. And again, what's appropriate in one location is not necessarily appropriate for all locations. So really as far as the small area plan goes, um, that concept of lifecycle housing is one that we try to always bring it back to, to say, okay, if you're a, uh, you know, a single adult or you're a young couple, you're looking for a different type of housing that someone who has many kids at home, someone who has an empty nest, they're looking for a different type of housing and are those choices available, uh, within, within the neighborhood? As far as the small area plan goes, we basically divided the neighborhood up into what we call sub-areas. And so each of these colored areas, we, um, kind of look at that they have very different characteristics. And so we have different recommendations for each. The yellow areas are the areas that were, um, included in this study that are predominantly , uh, single-family homes. And so within, um, kind of in response to, I think it was Dale, to your, to your question, really that the amount of change that we're recommending you see within what we're calling these established residential neighborhoods is quite minimal. So there may be projects that come along where someone wants to build, you know, a cottage cluster of houses or, you know, small, um, small town homes or something like that. You're going to see very little change within that particular sub-area. I think the areas where you will probably see much more change are the areas, um, you know, along Winchester and along State Street where different types of development are going to be far more, uh, far more appropriate. So, uh, throughout the, throughout the document, as you, as you review, you'll see that looking at these, um, these sub-areas, the yellow sub-area of established residential, the real, the recommendation is changes should be quite, uh, quite minimal. Um, within, within that housing section, um, we've got a little bit of, um, guidance on how housing could be incorporated within each of the, uh, each of the various sub-areas. So within that established residential area, you might see things like ADUs or mother-in-law apartments, those types of things that can be woven into the neighborhood with, you know, um, almost no visual, you know, change. The types of housing that, um, would be appropriate along State Street or in those areas that currently are, are light industrial, you might see mid-rise, um, housing or town homes or, or row houses. So again, as, as Jared mentioned, we're not, um, this isn't a wholesale rezone of any of this. It's just saying here is how a housing market might look at these, uh, look at these areas and the types of, um, types of housing that would, would most likely pencil for a developer, but also would, would be most appropriate for the, uh, for the context. Um, the, uh, I would say that the places in the region that especially along the tracks system that are easy to develop, uh, have been developed. And so we're seeing a lot more demand and a lot more, uh, pressure on the areas that might be a little more challenging to develop, such as, uh, the Fashion Place West is kind of in a, uh, again, a kind of isolated corner, uh, of the city. And, um, I would, I would hope that the city would, would kind of be prepared. So when you do have more development, uh, kind of knocking on the door, you've got some clear guidance and you've got some clear vision on what's appropriate and what would not be, what would not be appropriate. And in, in the draft of this, sorry, was there a question? No? Okay. Um, in the, in the draft of this plan, each, um, each of these sections, the, the housing section, the connectivity section, we've got some implementation recommendations as far as, uh, as far as priorities. And we've, we've categorized, categorized each of them into short-term, medium-term and long-term. There are some things that the city could, could do quite quickly, um, things like considering rezone of, um, key properties or other, uh, other types of policy changes. There are some things that could be, um, simple to do. There are other things that might take many years, lead time in order to, uh, in order to facilitate. And so breaking those down into kind of policy recommendations is part of this, uh, part of this process. As I mentioned, we worked with, uh, Fair and Peers Transportation Consultants to do an analysis of, of connection points, uh, gaps in the system where, uh, kind of where that infrastructure might need to be, uh, need to be focused on. gaps in the system, where, kind of where that infrastructure might need to be, need to be focused on. They did a, a quite thorough analysis of the, of the neighborhood, active transportation and walkability, those sorts of things. Not all connectivity improvements are, are created equal. And so some of them, again, short-term could be done, done quite easily and quite quickly. There are others, you know, when we start talking about the, the bridges that are, bridges over the interstates, parking structures, those types of things can, can take quite a bit of time to, to put together. So part of that strategy was to kind of figure out what are things that the city should be, you know, fitting into a budget, gating on a, you know, gating on a, a capital improvements schedule for kind of making the types of improvements, again, that would improve the neighborhood quality, but also facilitate some, or kind of draw in some private, private investment in the neighborhood as well. And then the final, final section of the smaller plan, we developed some, some key design guidelines the city could implement within, within this area. I know you have design guidelines for other parts of the city. So we talked with planning staff about what are, what are some of the key things that the city could, you know, is there, is a design overlay on, you know, the area around the track station, those types of things that could, again, get the type of walkable, you know, pedestrian-friendly development that, that, that kind of, again, leverages that infrastructure, that having a nice walkable node of activity around the track station would really help to improve, again, improve the quality of the neighborhood and that experience. If someone is getting off the track station and, you know, walking to work at the mall or other, you know, other destinations, what types of design features would need to be, would need to be included in that? The appendix, appendix to the document, we have included a few, what we call catalytic projects. Basically, kind of key catalysts for the city to consider or to, you know, kind of champion, to start to get, again, kind of improvements in the key areas that, that we identified as kind of opportunities for the city within the, within the, the small area, study area. Each one of these catalytic projects, we've included a case study. So for this particular catalytic project, the, the track station area redevelopment. In my experience, a lot of these, once you get a few developments that, you know, well-designed, improve walkability, have a good amenity for the neighborhood, whether it's, you know, services provided or additional housing choices. It starts to, again, draw in other, you know, attention from others to also invest in the neighborhood. So we looked at the Meadowbrook Station, just a few track stations north of, of this one, just outside of Murray City Limits. We just looked at, okay, over time from 1997 to 2019, what types of changes did, did we see? What types of investments and what sort of improvements did we see as far as, you know, average household income in that area or accessibility to jobs? Just using each one of those again, so it's a, you're not reinventing the wheel. You're saying, okay, what tools were used in this particular area in order to catalyze quality development? Another, another catalytic project that is a much longer, longer term, I would say, is looking at the Fashion Place Mall site as a potential mixed-use center. And as I mentioned, we met with the management of the mall quite some time ago and kind of talked about their, their aspirations for the future. And I think that with the future retail influx, a lot of, a lot of property owners of this type are looking at how do they transition into something that will be, uh, be more flexible in the future as far as, as demand goes. And we're seeing a lot of, the case study that we used, for example, is kind of a similar suburban mall in, in the Denver area. Bellmar area that looked at, it was in, you know, 1999, it was a very traditional mall, retail mall. By 2019, I'm not sure if you can see the, the table in the bottom right corner, but you can see that blue, the blue bar on each of those is the percentage or the, the square footage of retail that they had in the site. And so this, this particular location, they really transitioned the design and the use of that property to something that had far more variety and uses. You can see the actual square footage of retail shrink. The, the yellow bar is residential uses. The red is office. You can see that just, you know, kind of opening the door to those types of variety of uses can have a pretty significant impact on the community where, you know, currently the Fashion Place Mall is, you know, strictly a, a retail and restaurant destination. And it's highly successful, I would say, in, in 2021. I think everyone who owns retail locations like this, again, is looking at, okay, we're not entirely sure what the future retail is. How do we kind of start to plan for changes as they, as they come along? So again, that is a very long-term catalytic project. I think that you'll see, yeah, a lot, there, there's a lot of change up, up in the air. But that, kind of opening that conversation, I would say, would be a very productive one. I think very beneficial to, to the city and also to the, to the owner, ownership of the mall site. I think they, they see that they're a job center of a certain kind, that they have a lot of employment there. But there's not a lot of variety in what that employment is. And so I think if the, if the city sees Fashion Place area as a, a job center that's well-connected to transportation and regional networks, expanding the types of offerings that are located there, again, can, can go a long way in dealing with the growth that we're seeing, seeing across the region. Just to, kind of in conclusion, also in the smaller plan, we kind of mapped out short-term actions the city can take, medium-term and long-term. Again, each one of these, each one of these efforts has partners and partnerships that will need to be fostered. During this process, we met with, with representatives from UTA, we met with representatives from UDOT, the, the mall, of course. So I think the city has willing, willing partners out there to start to make these types of investments and changes. This is, again, is a kind of a long, a long lead time on a lot of beats, but the sooner, sooner we start those conversations and those processes, the sooner we'll get to kind of implementation.
Can I ask a question there? This is Kat Martinez. When you're saying short, medium, and long-term, can you give me an idea of what that means as far as years in time?
Sure. I would say short-term, probably, I would say the next three, three to five years. Medium-term might be five to 10, long-term 10-plus. With a small area plan, the timeframes we usually look at are 10, or, or sorry, 20 to 25 years. So the, the short-term things, a lot of them are things that you could kind of start that process today and figure out how to, how to implement, but it might take, you know, might take a couple of years to, to get to, to finalization.
Thank you.
Of course. Great.
Yeah, I have one question before you go. And I don't know if this is, if this is for you or if it's for our own community development, but I heard you say that the, the neighborhoods will be largely left alone, and that's, that's good. But what kind of buffer will we have between the existing neighborhoods? And whatever developments go in, and I know we already have that in zoning, but I think we need to make sure that that buffer is enlarged so we don't take down the quality of, of the, of the neighborhoods that have been there for 30, 40, 50 years. And one thing that was said to me today was, would you build this if it was coming up right next to your house? And I can't quite get that out of my mind. And I, I think we, I think we need to, I think the plan, the work you guys have done is great. I want to, I want to say that. And, and the vision is good. But somehow we have to maintain those neighborhoods that are there and not deteriorate the quality of those neighborhoods to, to build different, you know, businesses or, or residential areas.
Sure. Yeah, I think that's a, that is a really good question. I think that one of the drawbacks of a lot of zoning code is that it doesn't really consider some of those design elements and how to, how to buffer. And there, which is one reason why we've included some of those design guidelines. So if you've got, you know, high-intensity development that's a block away, and then you're, if you're sort of stepping down as you get closer to, you know, a single-story, single-family neighborhood, you want to have those design guidelines in place so that, you know, you don't have a five-story building towering over someone's backyard, because that's kind of the worst case. If you're, you know, if you're a single-family homeowner, you, your biggest fear is, again, is losing that privacy of that space that's so important and personal. It's a personal, you know, a personal decision. And so I think what, what this plan hopes to do is to kind of get those design elements in place so that those buffers are spelled out, so a developer knows exactly what is, what is allowed. And there's very clear guidance on that. I think a lot of, again, as I mentioned, a lot of those changes really are, I would say, mostly along Winchester and along State Street, where you'll see a lot more change. Those neighborhoods, north and south of the freeway corridor, again, the recommendation in this plan is that those should be very, you know, see very little change over time.
Thank you.
Brett, you had a question?
No, Dale asked, I've just, I've just, and maybe you don't have an answer to this, but I just, like Dale, I've had some calls about, not even just encroaching on their neighborhoods, but buying them out. Is that, that's not an intent to buy any homes out through that area?
No, no, I don't, unless, unless someone does something, I don't know. I don't think that's a recommendation from, from our end. I think, as I mentioned, the city doesn't own property in, you know, other than, you know, the senior center and those types of public amenities. There's no property here that the city controls. Nothing about this plan is saying the city should start to, you know, buy up homes to do, do things. It's really saying, if there's someone who owns property in these key corridors and wants to develop something, what sort of guidance do they have? Which currently, in, you know, the general plan, there's not, there's not much guidance. So what we're trying to do is to kind of anticipate that those, those inquiries will increase and making sure that the city has some, some clear vision on that. But no, there's no, no intent for the city to start wholesale purchase of lots of, lots of property.
Awesome. Thanks, Mark.
I have a question.
Yes.
If I may, and this may be a question from Melinda or Jeremy, or Jared, sorry. But what triggered doing the Fashion Place plan? What, what was the beginning of this? Why did we start it? If we could kind of talk about that a little bit more, and how long have we been doing it? And I think that's just so constituents can understand that this is something that we've set and why it started.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I'll, I'll answer that, and Jared can add on if, because he's been here longer than I have, but the answer is.
Sorry, you muted Melinda.
Okay, yeah, it said the host muted me. I was like, wait a minute, how, can I unmute myself now, host? So the general plan that we adopted back in 2017 called out for small area plans to, or studies to be conducted in certain areas of the city. We started with the Murray Central Station small, small area plan that we adopted about a year and a half ago, I think now, and, and moved next down the line, which was the Fashion Place West Small Area Plan. But through, through the general plan process that we started really back in 2015, 16, and was completed in 17, this was basically a task item for us to complete. Jared, do you have anything to add to that?
No, not, not really, other than I, I would, I would, to, to pile on that a little bit, there are probably, there are lots of different studies and small area plans and, and things like that that are suggested by the general plan. It's, it's 172 pages. There's a lot of information in there, and we could, we could spend 20 years and every penny we have studying everything. But these were, the track stations were the obvious first choices to do. And the Murray North Station, Fire Creek area, largely built out. And there was a whole TOD zone developed for that years ago. So it was a natural choice to start with these two. And funding is generally available from outside the city, as long as there's a transportation connection to it. So we're in, the short version is there's, there's money to be had to make these studies happen. So they got chosen. And Fashion Place was a good choice too, because our, our track stations are, they're busy. There are a lot of boardings and alightings at, at that station. I think, I, I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but they were, they were pretty, pretty high, especially at Murray Central as well, but shockingly high at, at Fashion Place West. A lot of people getting on and off the trains, and the red line and blue line, the red line coming out of Western Salt Lake County, that's its first connection and merger to the blue line. So to the main line going up into Salt Lake and then on up to the U and places like that. So it's, it's a heavily traffic station. We felt like it was the next natural choice.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to, to get some clarification on that, so I appreciate it.
Dale, did you have a question? And then we need to continue on.
Yeah, the last, last thing, and it's more of a statement than a question, the, the Murray Central Station, there isn't, the difference between the two is there is little or no housing around Murray Central. Where we, we're talking about now, there's hundreds of homes. And that, that's the main difference and why the other one was less, was easier to approve than this is, strictly because of the unknown. Those people have lived there for a long time. They expect to live there for a long time. So when this, when we start to develop that area in the future, I just can't make a strong enough point that we have to, number one, make sure we maintain the integrity of those neighborhoods.
Yeah, and I think, if I can, I can add, add to that, I think that the scale that, that scale of development you'll most likely see in the Fashion Place, Fashion Place West area, especially close to the track station. You simply don't have the scale of space that you have at the other track stations where, you know, Central Station and Murray North. You, you just, I, I would say you won't see the, the size of development, just because the, the space is much more limited. And so I think that, you know, you can alleviate your, your constituents' concerns, that you're going to see some development, but it's not going to be at the, you know, the massive scale that you see where you simply have a lot more physical space to occupy. So you're going to see, I would say, more townhome type of development, more, again, things that will serve the neighborhood as opposed to things that are going to be a draw from, you know, other, other places across the region.
Yeah, Councilmember Cox, I want to share with you a term that I heard probably about two months ago now, when I was in a meeting with Wasatch Front Region, Regional Council. And, and I really liked the term because I, to me, it helped kind of explain some of the, the changes that we might anticipate to see, and, and more importantly, the changes that we wouldn't anticipate seeing. And the terminology was that, when you, when you look at a city, we have areas of stability and we have areas of change. And the neighborhoods that you're referring to, and the neighborhoods that are included in this study area, really are areas of stability. The areas of change are, are some of those right now that we're looking at, where the commercial has not been viable for the last however many years, like the Kmart site, like the ShopCo site, the RC Willie that's closing. Those are the areas of change that we're looking at. The areas of stability in Murray, really, the strength of Murray is our single-family residential neighborhoods. And so I wouldn't anticipate those neighborhoods changing because they are the stability part. So I, I don't know if that makes any sense with what we're looking at here, but to me, it really helped me kind of identify how, when we talk about these things as, you know, staff that work with the with these terms and phrases and these types of plans day in and day out, it really is, I think, kind of a good term to help the general public understand some of the changes that we might anticipate. And, and those are really like areas that are unstable for one reason or another. But the neighborhoods, the single-family residential in this area really has been a stable place. And we wouldn't anticipate seeing any changes from that because, or because of that.
Okay, we need to continue on. We should have scheduled an hour for this, I guess. But anyway, thank you, Melinda. Thank you, Jared. And thank you, Mark. I appreciate your input.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
All right, let's continue on. Now we're at the water leak abatement policy. Danny Astle?
Yeah, I also have, thank you, Council and Mayor. Thank you for the time to, to meet with us for a few minutes. We'll be brief. And, but we did want to share this information. I'd have Corey Wells, our water superintendent with us as well. So I'm going to be sharing most of the information. So I have him here as backup for technical things as well. So just, just a little bit of background and, and I'd like to share my screen if possible.
All right, there we go.
Oh, okay. So it's up? You can see it?
It's up.
Okay, thank you. It's a little difficult. I have two screens and I gotta go, go back and forth. So, all right. So, so in 2016, some of you may be aware of this and some not, but in 2016, the Utah State Legislative, Legislative Session, there was a bill that came out of that, Senate Bill 28, which was passed and required all water providers to establish a conservation-based water rate structure. At the time, Murray City, we felt like we had a tiered system, but it was broken down into a summer rate and a winter rate. And as we reviewed that, the opinion came back, it, it did not meet the intent. And so as a result of that, we embarked on a pretty extensive and a lengthy study to help us develop and implement a new tiered water rate structure. But that met two things. One is, it's met the intent of the legislation and it also provided for the conservation portion of it and provided the financial liability for the water fund to continue to be viable for the future. So those were the three, several things that we were looking at. But in an effort to not take advantage of the misfortune of our Murray residences or water customers who may experience leaks in their system, the mayor has asked, asked the Public Works and the Water Department specifically to investigate and possibly develop a policy that might address some of the concerns that we'd, we had been getting. Since it's, it's, it's an administrative function by code that the mayor is the only one who has the authority to, to give any relief or make any adjustments in, in a person's bill. And so what we are doing here is kind of, is to basically formalize what we have been doing. But by extension, the mayor can delegate the activity, the actual activity of it as part of the policy going forward. So the policy, let's see if I can advance my screen. Yes, okay. So, so the background of, of this, 2017 is when we engaged our engineering firm to develop this. So we, we share a little bit of background in the, in the policy and what the tiers represent. And many of you know what this is already, but we spell it out in, in the, in the policy so that everybody understands how this works. But the purpose is to establish procedures to be followed in the event that a customer experiences a leak on their property. So going forward. So there, there's a section in here about the leak repair, the abatement and the, and the payments that are to be made. And it's important to understand that, that the customer has a, has a significant responsibility here anyway. By code, if, down at the bottom of this slide, Section 13, 13.08010, and then 1308.120, the first one requires them to keep their pipes in working condition in any apparatus connected to it. And then also that if they, if they see any wasteful things or leaks or whatever it might be, they are to, to make, to remedy that immediately. And so that, that's part of the policy as well. So we, we share that information. And then there, and then there's a responsibility for the city. And then we'll, we'll take a look at that to make sure that it's been adequately repaired by the customer or dealt with. And then once the, the city has determined that everything has been done appropriately, they can use this policy going forward. And there's a form on the end of it, which we'll share with you in just a second. So that, the adjustment, it, it's kind of important to understand how this adjustment works because there is a cost to the city. We have a basic level of service that we have, but then, then above that basic level of service, there's a demand service that we, we do. And, and that was taken into account in the tiered rate structure as well. So before we get too far down the road here, we wanted to make sure that we have dealt with, that we needed to consider our pumping, our treatment, our storage, the transporting of that water, the delivery of that water, the monitoring, repairs, the replacements, and the billing and our customer service activities that are all part of the costs related to the, to, to our water, our water rate structure. And then, and so in here, in this policy, we allow them to only go back to billing periods because we, again, our, our code requires them to fix it immediately. And it can easily cross over to, to billing periods without too much problem. But, but we will look at two billing periods. And then we'll look at what is their normal water usage. And their normal water usage in the same period, and we'll go back a couple of years to review that to make sure that we're, we're treating them fairly. And, and then anything above that, we, we will consider that, that, oop, that adjustment. So, let's see. And then there's also a, a part of that policy only, we will not go, because of the costs of that extensive level of service, we won't adjust anything below the, the tier three of, of water. So because of that extra cost that we incur as a result of providing that, that additional water and, and pumping and all the, all the things that go along with that. So anyway, this, this policy, again, we'll look at the, at two billing periods. And then we have this form also that we'll go back. The other, one of the things here too, is the customers will only, if they do have a leak and they, and of course, we're, you know, when we go out and inspect or visit with them about the, about the repairs, we want to make sure that they've done a good job with that repair. Or if they've hired somebody, that they've done it correctly as well. So we provide free inspections on this. But as part of that, we'll, we'll only allow an adjustment every 24 months on a rolling 24-month period. So, so they need to make sure that it's done right. And so, so do we. So, and then, and then we have this form. If they meet all those requirements, they fill this form out and they can move forward with that. So that's what we're presenting here. In a couple of weeks, we'd like to bring that back to the council for approval. And if you have any questions, we'd like to fill those now.
I have a question.
Sure.
In terms of working with a certain company, does it have to be a pre-approved company? Is there a list? I had this question come up a few times when I was canvassing about the cost and how some people, maybe more expensive versus somewhere else where they got a quote from. And, and how does that work out?
Sure. What we normally do is, there is no pre-approved list for the city. We don't think that that's appropriate, but we do have customer or companies that we have personally seen. And so we have a list of two or three or more that we have, that we can suggest to them to, to get quotes. And they'll, they'll vary. They really will. But we have several that are trustworthy and, and treat customers fairly. It's expensive no matter what, but sometimes they do take advantage of people.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions for Danny? All right.
Sure.
Thanks, Danny.
Oh, thanks.
Sheriffwoman Turner, may I say a few things?
Oh, yes, GL.
In your packets, it was late in your packets, but there's an ordinance that goes along with this policy. I want to explain that ordinance real quickly. One of the things we tried to do with the ordinance was to emphasize that the service lines that are on the property side or the side that the resident owns are their responsibility to take care of and to watch that there isn't any waste. The other thing we tried, we wanted to do was to establish and memorialize, as Danny said earlier, what we've been doing for years. And that is, this is administrative function of the mayor, but it's a, it's a departure from your rate that you've set as a legislative body. So the ordinance authorizes the mayor with an administrative function to carry out the policy's development and carry it out. That's the purpose of the ordinance. And it, it would, it would come actually technically approved before the policy itself.
Great. Thanks, GL. Okay, let's continue on. We're at electric vehicle charger rate discussion. Blaine Hackey and Matt Youngs.
Hi, Diane, can you hear me?
Yes, thanks.
Okay, great.
It's good to see you.
Well, thank you. We've got to, to talk about electric vehicle chargers tonight. In your council action form, you can see that there are two items we gave you. One was a summary of the electric vehicle history at this point in Murray. And the second item is the text of the ordinance for a new electric vehicle charge rate that we intend to adopt in two weeks in the February 16 council meeting. Tonight, I've got Matt Youngs, who's on my staff, who's the resident pro, you might say. As to electric vehicle, he's going to present a PowerPoint to you, 15 to 20 minutes, then we have a couple of minutes for Q and A. And then we intend to wrap it up. So the goal tonight is to get you up to, up to the news on where we are. We're ready to propose a rate. Thanks go out to Mark Richardson from the Attorney's Office and GL for helping us with the text on that. And huge kudos to Matt Youngs for presenting this. Matt is Zooming as well. I can see a little tiny box in the top right. So Matt, take it from there.
Okay, thank you. Everyone hear me okay?
Yep. Good to see you, Matt.
Awesome. Yeah, good to see you. Happy Groundhog Day. I don't know if that's a thing, but happy Groundhog Day to everyone. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. And, let's see. Everyone see that okay?
Yep.
Awesome. So this is something we're excited about. As Blaine mentioned, it's not very often that we get to present a new rate, but this is something we've been working on for a while. And I'll, I'll just jump right into it. The, first I'll talk about the, the background to this a little bit. Something that most of you are probably familiar with that was in the news a couple of years ago was the Volkswagen's emissions scandal that, that occurred and how, how that affected Utah is approximately 7,000 Volkswagen, Audi and Porsche vehicles were affected by what was found out to be an emission cheat device that was installed on, on approximately 7,000 of those vehicles and, and other vehicles worldwide. So what was happening is those vehicles were, were emitting more pollutants as they were being driven than what would have been, than what was showing up on emissions tests. So the end result from that is a settlement that they settled with Utah and many other states and, and countries around the world because of this. Utah's total allocation from the settlement was just over $35 million. So the goal of that, the majority of the funding went to, it was allocated to reduce emissions from, from larger freight trucks and school and shuttle and transit buses, kind of the low hanging fruit from, as far as pollution goes. Where we're concerned, 11% of those funds were allocated to what are called zero emissions vehicle supply equipment, the acronym EVSC. What that really means is electric vehicle charging equipment. So if you ever see that acronym, EVSC, it just is referring to electric vehicle chargers. So kind of the, the silver lining of that, I guess, in, in trying to reduce emissions, it created an opportunity for, for us as a city to apply, to have access to some of that $35 million, albeit a, a small amount. So in looking at, did someone have a question? No, okay. Maybe I'm just hearing some feedback. So in, in putting an application together, it gave us the opportunity to, to discuss some of our goals, maybe as a department and city as, as far as, as DVs go. So the, the first goal is we wanted to provide the, a charging service to EV owners. With us being an electric utility and selling electricity and being in the business of selling electricity, we, we thought that was something that applied to us and will apply to us more in the future. So we, we worked with the mayor's office to choose a location of where we would want to install some of these public chargers within the city. And, and chose, ended up choosing the Park Center as far as public, public spaces in the city that are heavily used. We felt that the Park Center was, was a place where they would, we would, they would definitely get a lot of use. So along with that, we, we felt, saw the need then to develop an electric vehicle charging rate for public charging. And in addition to that, as I mentioned, this is something with us being an electric utility, as these EVs become more and more prominent and, and more and more car manufacturers are moving to, towards electric vehicles, it's something that, that we want to plan for as a utility. Down the road, if everyone is, is going to have one of those, one of these EVs instead of a gas vehicle, it's something that we want some experience with as a utility. So we put together an application that we submitted to the state and we were awarded that dollar amount. There you can see just over $157,000 to install two Level 2 chargers and one DC Fast Charger at the Park Center. And so it's a project we've been working on over the, the past year that some of you may have seen there. It's just to the, the northeast of the Park Center as you drive down the main road there through the park. And it's something we're getting close to having finished here. We, we, as part of the application process, we went through a competitive bid process. I want to give a shout out to Brooke because she's on the call. When she was working in purchasing, she was very instrumental in, in helping us go through this process and, and really invaluable through, through the process. So we went through that process with her help and we, the award ended up going to, the bid award went to a company out of Kansas City, Missouri, Lily Pat EV, who we've been working with and they've been great to work with. And just more of a, a side note, the, the many, the ChargePoint is the manufacturer of the chargers that we've installed. And that was something that we didn't really have a say in at, at this point for the funding. It was something that the, that the state went through a selection process to choose. So. So here's not a great, this isn't a great picture, but this is a picture of the, the charging stations at the park. The, the ones on the left and the far right are level two chargers. And I'll talk about what that means in just a minute. And the one, the larger one in the center is a level three charger or what's called a DC fast charger. So the level two chargers on the left and right, they both have the ability to charge two vehicles at once and the DC fast charger can charge one vehicle at a time. So we have the potential there to, to charge five vehicles at a time when, when that's complete. So in addition to the, the chargers that we're working on there to install at the park center, there is a single level two charger that was installed with the new, at the new fire station, and that's in service. And we also have plans to install two level chargers at the new city hall. We applied for a grant to partially cover the cost of those, so that, that's in the plan there to, to be installed. So the rate that we're proposing tonight will apply to all of these public chargers, the ones that exist and, and future chargers as well. So I mentioned, I, I talked about what these different levels are. This is just for informational purposes. The, the level one chargers that you may hear about are, are ones that can be just plugged into a normal 120 outlet in, in a home or garage. And so they, as you see, take a lot longer to charge, six to 22 hours depending on the size of the, the vehicle battery. The level two chargers are more, they're the most common that you'll see out in the public, but people, homeowners, EV owners will also make upgrades to their electric service to have these installed. And they have the type of plug that you'd have on a, on an electric cooking range or a dryer that you have to have upgraded in your garage. So they take between four and eight hour, or excuse me, two to eight hours to get a full charge on. And then the DC fast charger or level three, they're less common. You, you'll hear those talked about, that like the Tesla superchargers, those are, those are like a, a level three charger on steroids. And the goal of those is to charge when time is of the essence, right? They cost more typically to use, but, but they'll fully charge an, an EV in, in approximately 40 minutes or so. So like I mentioned, the ones that we're installing at the park center are, are two of these level twos that are most commonly used. And then we wanted some experience with the DC fast charger, so we, we've installed one of those as well. So as, as mentioned, in, in looking at developing a, a rate for this, we went back to a cost of service study that we had done a few years ago. And what the cost of service study is, is something that utilities put together that looks at what the cost of serving electricity to a customer is. So, and, and basically the goal of that is to, to have some data behind whether or not our rates are where they need to be, whether we need to, to have a rate increase to cover costs, et cetera. So we went back to the, the company, the, the person whom we'd worked with three, a few years ago, Dave Berg Consulting, and solicited his help to help us take that data from the cost of service study and, and give us a recommendation on electric vehicle charging rates. So his recommendation that I'll talk about here in a moment is based on, it uses the data of, of power supply costs, transmission, distribution, administrative costs, takes all that into account of what it actually costs to serve a customer with electricity. It also takes into consideration the, the charge point fees and O and M costs of the EV chargers. In addition to that, we also looked and took into consideration what other local cities are doing in the county, mostly for EV rates for public charging. Some cities, they give away power for a, a short amount of time. And then if you exceed, you know, you keep the vehicle there charging over that time, you're, you're hit with a, I believe one of them is like a $75 fine for exceeding that. Other cities, they have, they just charge a, a flat connection fee. Some will charge a flat fee per hour regardless of how much power is used. And then some will charge per kilowatt hour, which is charging for the actual amount of power used. So the recommendation that our staff is, is giving and that the rate consultant gave is that with us being a power utility and knowing exactly what our power costs are, it really probably makes the most sense for us to charge per kilowatt hour like we do a, a residential or commercial customer. That way the, it falls in line with the, a rate principle that the users of that service are paying their own way. They're paying for the service that they receive, just like our residential and commercial customers. So the rate that we're proposing, similar to, to some other cities in the valley, per kilowatt hour, for the level two charger, we're proposing 20 cents per kilowatt hour and the DC fast charger would be 30 cents per kilowatt hour.
Matt?
Yes?
It's Diane. I'm just wondering, do you have a list of the cities and how much they charge?
Uh, I, I, it's something that I could get my hands on, I think, and, and get to you if, if you're interested. I know there's quite a range. But yeah, that, that's something I could provide if you'd like, definitely.
That'd be great if you don't mind. I mean, I think what we're, what you're proposing is certainly reasonable, but I'd just like to know what other cities are charging.
How it compares, absolutely. Yeah, that's something we can get to you for sure. So I'll explain in a future slide what, what this means in real world dollars. I, I understand being a, I work for a power utility, I know what a kilowatt hour is, but I know that that doesn't mean anything to most people, right? Of what a kilowatt hour is or what 20 cents would I actually translate to in a charging session? So I'll get to that in, in a slide. But the other part of the rate is something we were trying to consider is how, what kind of limit we should place, put into place for these. So what we're proposing is a, and again, we worked with the city attorney's office on this and mayor's office. What we're proposing is a four hour parking limit for, for all of these public chargers. And then a, a $10 fee for exceeding the four hour limit. Part of this, the goal of that, we, from what we understand in talking to other cities, it's not a big problem that they see. They don't see these limits abused because EV owners are trying to look out for each other, you know, and, and not overstay longer than they need to. But, but the goal of having that price signal of $10, a $10 fee is to avoid having to use valuable police resources to, to enforce parking at, at these chargers. So it's certainly something we could change it down the road if it becomes a problem, but, but that's the goal. And the other thing I'll mention, that the, the way that this works, the way that users would pay to use these chargers is very similar to how the, the public parking works like in downtown Salt Lake where you can download a, a free app and pay via the app. So the users would download a free charge point app and have an account with them and then all the payment and fees and everything goes through that, that charge point app. And, and for that service, charge point then has a, a, a flat 10% administration fee that they charge users, so, or that they charge us, I guess. So as promised, this is kind of an example on a level two charger, a real world approximate dollar amount. Tesla Model S, which is their, their larger, you know, battery vehicle, one hour at 20 cents on the level two charger would be around $2.17. If they stayed plugged in for four hours, you'd be looking at, you know, $8.68. A Chevy Bolt that has a much smaller battery would then be less money, $1.48 for one hour and $5.92 for four hours. On the DC fast charger that uses a lot more electricity, from what we understand, that the most common charging length or charging session is around 15 minutes. And so that's around 338 and 325 for the, the smaller battery. So just to give you an idea of what, what an EV user would be using for, for those different times, obviously could cost more if they stay plugged in, but, but typically from what we understand, that the DC fast charger is when someone's in a hurry and just needs a, a, a quick charge to get them somewhere. So that is all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions and I think I'll turn it over to Blaine here to, to finish.
Are there any questions?
Thanks Mag, great, great presentation.
Any questions?
We're ready for some Q and A.
Hi, yeah, I, I'm just really excited about this. I think this is great. The rates seem reasonable from the information I have. I'm sort of a logistical question beyond that is, is there going to be signs up saying this is an electrical charging station or paint on the parking spot, especially with people having not maybe been to the park center in a while? I can imagine them pulling up and going, that's a weird thing there and then leaving their car there.
Right. Right. No, absolutely. It's something I should have mentioned. So we're go, we're going to have both signs and, and paint, as you mentioned, so it, someone doesn't confuse that as a, a regular parking space. So it is something we'll definitely have in place before they go into service.
Amazing, well, they look great.
Thank you.
I know, it's so exciting.
Yeah, we're excited.
We were glad to use some of the grant money, but also we've had to throw some money in on our own a little bit to make this happen, but we're happy to do that. As Matt mentioned, it's kind of a pilot program to us. We wanted to learn the process, knowing full well the city hall will be built soon with the EV chargers and we wanted to at least get a foundation of what we were looking at. So in two weeks from tonight, we will come back to the council in a council meeting and ask for an adoption of the ordinance, which is the new rate that Matt just proposed, 20 cents and 30 cents. And the text of that is in your packet. And for the 16th meeting, we will have that text as well in your packet. And also Diane, we will get a list of maybe some of the other cities and what they do. That, that would be a good information for you too.
Yeah, that'd be great. I suspect I'll have someone ask me that question. I have a question for Matt. I'm, I'm just wondering, so ChargePoint has administrative fees of 10%. Is that included in the charge or is that on top of the cost of the charge? I mean, is that, you know, the...
So if I understand your question correctly, that the, the users would pay the 20 cents or the fee and all of that money goes to ChargePoint and then every month they take 10% off of that revenue and send us a check basically. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
We get, we get 90% of it.
So we, we are essentially collecting 90, 90% of, of that. It's not on top of, it's the total, all the total fees, the rate fees and any potential, you know, penalty, the $10 charge, that all goes to ChargePoint and then they cut us a check minus 10% every month.
Great, so it's just...
From what I understand.
The flat 20 or 30?
Apps out there that will show you in the county and its community where these chargers are. Not only our public chargers, but people have private chargers that will allow people access to them. And you can look on these apps and find out how much it costs and if it's available, if somebody's there, if it's broken. It's, it's kind of interesting to see dots all over the county of where these chargers are. And ours will be right at the park center.
I know, it's so exciting. It's been a while since we discussed accessing the money from the VW money. So that's awesome. Thanks you guys.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, any other, okay, we're good. So Jennifer, announcements?
No, I don't have any announcements. We just need Matt to unshare his screen, please.
Oh, fine, I'm sorry, I'm trying here. Here we go.
Okay.
There you go.
So we are adjourned and we have five minutes.